From Penney Scott Nation are going to be.
Uh, correct.
Cool.
Yeah. All right, it is a comment specific to um the memo that we have tonight, so I'll just try to bring her feedback into that conversation. Well then, great.
We are.
Pretty good. Pretty good.
Yeah.
Feeling a little rushed.
Just feel like you're writing someone's name next to you.
Yeah, or like someone who has.
The length of the, I mean.
Like an extra foot on your horse.
It's not like middle, it's like, here you go, here's my link for you over there. Everybody ready? Zoe and Pen, you get to be part of the fun tonight.
Right now?
You're both voting members.
On the rigorous agenda.
That has very little votes, admittedly, but.
We'll do our best.
All right. Well then, good evening, I'm Shanna Cox, Chair of the planning board, I welcome all here this evening and I call this meeting for order. Our secretary is out this evening, shall I call roll because unless my vice wants to be roll call?
I think whoever's comfortable doing that.
Sure, sure. Uh, Roger Dupuy.
Here.
Micah Markcott.
Present.
Lucy Bisson is absent, Mark Roy is here, Shanna Cox.
Here.
Uh, Amy Smith is absent, Alexandra Pine.
Here.
Penthea Burns.
Here.
Zoe Lindstrom.
Here.
Thank you, and please let the record reflect that we do have um two members of city staff here tonight, that's Shelley Norton, our deputy director, and Craig Tebow, our land use planner. And you guys are taking notes tonight too, I'm guessing?
We are.
Thank you, um, much appreciated, this evening, we are going to uh have both Penthea and Zoe um move up to members with voting privileges to reflect the absences of Amy and Lucy that were communicated to us in advance. Thanks in advance for your good voting, I appreciate you. Okay. Um, this evening we do have a light agenda, is there any adjustments to the agenda that are required?
No.
Was there any advanced correspondence you need to share?
No.
Thank you, we don't have any public hearings this evening?
Correct.
So we're going to begin with other business tonight, uh, and tonight our other business is our sole purpose for meeting, we're bringing back the planned use developments, which I will only refer to as PUDs going forward because I've done some research, that's the one we're going to stick with. So this evening, the planning board will be continuing the creation of a planned unit development ordinance, providing greater development flexibility for residential, commercial, and industrial development. Shelley, I believe you're going to kick us off, I really appreciated the front page that made our purpose clear, thank you for that.
Sure, yeah. So um, as you all recall, on September 5th of 2024, you initiated changes to zoning and land use code to create the planned unit development ordinance. And then content was discussed on February 10th, March 24th, April 14th, and May 12th of 2025. What's before you tonight is a first rough draft of an ordinance, we think hits on the concerns raised by um yourselves as well as staff. But we do acknowledge that there are still elements that will need work. We wanted to bring it to you now though, for your initial thoughts and to restart the conversation because it has been a while since we've talked about it. And we also gave this to the housing committee, which is meeting Wednesday this week, to see if they have any thoughts and input. In addition, we have identified that there may be some issues with some elements of the ordinance, most notably, some of the flexibility written into it may not comply with state law, uh specifically, some items may conflict with the variance requirements. So um, we are going to be looking at if we can accomplish some of these goals in other ways than uh having them in this PUD ordinance, so maybe actual changes to the zoning ordinance itself. We expect to have those issues primarily addressed for the second rough draft when we come back to you. So tonight, we're looking on input on whether this is the direction, you know, feels like it's in line with the goals that you had, whether it seems like it will encourage the desirable development kind of that you want to incentivize. If we missed key content, and then where you think things are insufficient or unclear, especially around elements for how the board functions, like decision making, um review criteria, you know, we're still discussing among ourselves, do we need review criteria for this element or that element that we maybe haven't provided yet? Um, and then we have a couple of specific questions we want to pose to you that came up as we were preparing the draft.
Thanks. Can I ask a couple of process questions?
Yes.
As we get ready to dive in, one is, um, what is, given the next steps, which I think I heard you say is this would come back to us in another draft form for a final round of feedback before we have a polished piece that we're putting together and I'm assuming doing public hearings on?
Yeah.
Would you be able to provide us feedback from the housing committee even electronically between now and the next time that we take it up? So that we're building in that feedback loop, maybe prior to you spending too much time working on creating the second version?
Yeah.
Does that feel like a good time? Likewise, what support do you get in doing a compliance review? And would that be something that would be happening before the second version or after?
Yeah, so our thought is that we um, we really haven't had legal review done yet. So we would anticipate having that done before we we bring another draft back. Our hope is that when we bring you a second rough draft, we're fairly confident that what we're bringing is something that's going to work. And at that point, um, I know there was a desire to possibly reach out to others besides the housing committee for feedback. And so that's the version we'd like to bring for um additional feedback if there are other parties that that we're going to reach out to for feedback. We want to make sure that we've addressed some of the issues that that we think are there before we ask for feedback from others.
That sounds like a great and thoughtful process.
Yeah.
Um, the last process point is this entire thing is all new language, there's no version within our current ordinances of which you're having to track changes, and so this is kind of plopped in full scale, so any changes that we're making, we don't have to worry about mincing or catching the words because everything is fresh and new.
That's right, everything is new, um, we will kind of probably when we do that second rough draft, we're probably going to start bringing forward some changes to other sections that are going to be kind of dovetailing with this, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay, that sounds great. I heard you say you have some specific questions and that you would like some general feedback as well as to pay attention to process points for where we make decisions or need criteria. Curious in terms of how folks reviewed and prepared for today's discussion, shall we take it section by section, not line by line, but section by section, and then finish with making sure we've addressed any specific questions you have? Or would you like to reverse that order?
That's fine, we have questions that are by section, so if you want to discuss a section, we can ask the question for that section if there was one, and if not, then move on, so I think that makes sense to do it section by section, yeah.
And then for uh, for the record of my planning board, as I look at my phone, Amy, who was running a fever and not able to make it and had planned to, did email some feedback that I'll bring into the conversation on page four, which is mostly a reminder to you all to help me remember.
Okay.
Put a note on that page. And I'm not, you know, searching my socials while we're in this meeting, I promise. Okay, great, so then we'll start with section sixteen, and this is where we really kick it off. With A, I'd love to not read everything aloud or go by it, and so did anyone have anything they want to lift up on section A? Mr. Markcott?
Okay, well, that was my question, because you referred to it as section sixteen, but that's the whole ordinance.
Yeah.
Or.
Sixteen A?
Yeah, so A is actually going to be the section, right?
Yeah.
A through K?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah, I just am trying to get my head around the vocabulary.
Naming culture?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably technically a subsection, but I think we just call it section for tonight's purposes.
So A through K?
Yeah.
Okay, that was major my question.
Anything on A or B on the first page? Yeah, Penthea?
Uh, yeah, one of the things that I have been wondering about with section B, both in reading that section and the later ones, is um the terminology of theme feels clumsy to me and um that later it it refers back to section B, the purposes of section B, and um, those seem like really different um terminologies. And so um, as I was reading it, I was thinking about um the uh, the sentence that precedes the list talks about um development that will result in, so it feels very sort of outcome. It seemed both a combination of outcome, purpose, design, um, and um so I just, I was sort of longing for something that theme feels a little squishy to me, and so that's, that's my only feedback, is if that could get a little bit more tangible.
And what you're saying in reference to B is that you like some of this language, because I don't see theme in B. I've found it problematic in some following sections too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we also refer to goals as well, so we definitely weren't consistent.
Yes, yep.
Um, between those, does goal or outcome or purpose, like is there anything that's sort of jumps out?
The two things that jumped out to me is um, the sentence that precedes it, it talks about development that will result in, and so that sort of begs for some kind of outcome or um result. And uh, somewhere else um made me think about uh, like design or intention, um, that those two things, so those are the, I I don't know how helpful that is, but those are the things that came to mind to me.
I'd love to see that sentence finish with a sentence instead of result in these things, so part of what was sticking with me is that, and there's a couple of places, so like I have one for C2 that's kind of, is it any of these individually and/or a combination of any of the below? And is it worth saying aloud? So like the purpose of the section should be to encourage development that achieves the following goals or purposes, and I say that because an outcome of reduced infrastructure demand is challenging, right?
Yes.
And so here, this language might be goals, and might result in the following goals, either individually or a combination of any of the below, so that it states really clearly, something coming forward doesn't have to achieve one through eight. It could just be number seven, could be five through seven.
Yep.
Right, and so I just think adding some language there would would help with that clarity.
One or more of the following goals.
Yeah. One or more of the following, that's lovely.
Has a nice, has a nice ring to it.
Yeah.
Zoe?
Yeah, and I agree, I like something that doesn't end in the colon, this is in B, something that says will result in colon, I also would prefer just a sentence because for instance, you have um item three under B, you also have a that results in, so I'd rather not have multiple, something that results in, something else that results in yet another, so that could be a good, um, just keeping an eye out for those will clue us into where we need to change the phrasing of the beginning of the phrase.
Yeah, and your three could be displays, freedom of design that displays innovative, efficient, attractive combinations of.
Yeah, yeah.
Making sure I didn't miss anyone before we move to C?
I think, I think I had a question about B.
Sure.
Okay. So as a statement before I ask a question, since we're tying the ability to do a PUD and any flexibility or density bonuses that might be um granted to these goals, if you will, in section B, it's a fairly important section to get right, and so number five, staff, um, had a question about that. As we Nope, number six, I wrote that down wrong, sorry, number six, um, about ownership opportunities. We were wondering if this should be limited to affordable and workforce instead of for all income levels, and it may have been an error in what we had written, because we realized we may have changed something there.
Go ahead, Alex.
I was going to say, we we debated this last time.
Okay.
And the board was, I think, from what I remember, fairly um strongly willed about having it be all income levels, just.
All income, okay. With the call out in number five still being there. So we we are both prioritizing, like we recognize a need for affordable and workforce, and we need citywide planning solutions that solve for all income levels to support holistic growth. And so I think that language there in the end was intentional and a reflection of the conversation.
Well, specifically owner occupied.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so number six is good the way it's written, it sounds like.
Yeah.
All right, perfect, thank you for that clarification. We did wonder, um there's a requirement in here that they provide a description of what of section B their PUD actually addresses or helps to to create, and we were wondering if it would be helpful to have an approval section or criteria for the board as you, in, the way we've written it, um, there's a an earlier approval level that's on the concept essentially.
I'm sorry, are you referencing another section about the process in here?
I'm sorry. Because this section B will be used by you, the board, to determine if you should give them concept approval, right? One of the elements that you're approving during concept approval is that they've met, that they're using one of these in item B as their purpose or their, you know.
Organizing principle.
Organizing principle, whatever we're going to call it. Um, I like organizing principle, I'll write that down. So I'm just wondering, we have struggled a little bit as staff, looking at something like number two, reduce negative impacts on the environment, and that's a little vague, or it can be interpreted really broadly. Number three even could be, um, you know, what's an attractive combination of, you know, so we're just curious if it would be helpful to you, and I don't know if you need to answer this question right at this moment, but as we go through the ordinance, if if you, if we don't have um anything that helps you make a decision like that, if you need some review criteria or some guidance on what would pass the muster?
I'm perfectly fine with people being creative and trying to make an argument and then us saying, eh, or yeah.
Yeah, I concur, I think the, I think the bonus on the applicant would be, so what I would love to see in that review process that you're stating is that the application and that which we are being told and seeing states which singular or combination of B they believe. So if somebody comes forward and says, I feel like that I've nailed number three, I haven't really attended to anything else, that's not my organizing principle, and then we see a traditional single family subdivision that doesn't appear to have done anything innovative, and there, I'm going to use your PUD ordinance is based on solely being innovative, then we're going to have to make them argue that a little bit more. Whereas some of these other ones could be pretty readily observable, right, so I think put it on them.
Yep.
Alex?
Yeah, I remember in one of our previous conversations that we, as a board, talked about sort of not like having what has now turned into B be more of sort of the the spiritual guidance of the ordinance, and not so much a rubric that we're we're uh judging to, so I wonder if there are like specific metrics that fall within these, and I think like to your point, like number two, you know, B2, reduce negative impacts on the environment, it's like, okay, like, you know, that that is, as someone who works in the environmental field, a really broad thing, you know, is it energy, is it land use, is it how people live their life in this place, you know, all of these things can can add up to that, so I, yeah, I think uh keeping, keeping metrics out of this makes a lot of sense to me, I think making it sort of approvable thing. And if there are sections that sort of refer to this as like the guiding rubric, maybe we do come up with metrics and they live someplace else. So like, you know, uh, the the sort of like, the guiding principle of, you know, reduce negative impacts on the environment is preservation of natural lands, is energy usage, is this, you know, it's not, there will be paper straw dispensers in every food establishment.
Eighty percent energy efficiency goals met through lead, blah blah blah.
Yeah, 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 it's, it, you know, lead or equivalent, or, you know, something like that.
Okay.
But not in this section, I think is my comment.
I mean, because this is the like, this is the place where we're throwing out, wow us, propose something, and this community has space for you being innovative and for us working with you on that, like that's the whole point, both of the concept process and this, so I don't want it to be too restrictive, I will say, some of the sentence structures on the numbers in there are a little wonky. So like, uh, reduced, reduced, freedom, the clustering, increased, increased, opportunities, the establishes.
Yeah.
So like whatever structure we go with, whether we're leading with a verb or an adjective, that we use it consistently based on that preceding sentence, whatever you land with, making sense with any one of these as a standalone. I'm looking at Zoe, because I bet she's got some.
I mean, they are all noun phrases, but they're just derived a little differently. I, maybe there's a way, um, unfortunately, I didn't get to my big copy editing thing before this meeting, but I know we're going to have another.
That's okay, I think the next time is when it matters.
But that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Um, to me as well, so, um, yeah, not a bad point, but they, I think they do all start with like something that ultimately is a noun phrase.
I hate seeing the start it when it's not, anyway, that's just me. Anything else from staff on B?
Uh, no, the only other question was just like, how do these goals sound, are we missing anything? And that's something that you can add now, we could add to later, but just think about.
They reflect the conversations we've had today. And I would hope, while I appreciate your willingness to take our feedback throughout this whole process right up to the end, that we're not throwing new ideas into the mix, but that we're finding all the work that we've done over the many meetings stated in your memo. That's my hope for all of us today, I don't know that we'll hit it, we'll see. I mean, I love a good idea, but, um, can we move to C, did you have one on B?
Yeah, just one on, uh, channeling Lucy. And somebody brought this to my attention, on B, A, the establishment establishes, probably the word should be establishment of.
Yeah.
If there's nothing better than that, just changing it to establishment, and I have one in C as well.
Thank you, Lucy, stand in. Are we good to move to C? I I would just lift up the same type of feedback that I offered in the other one, in C1, the following types of PUDs are allowed, commercial, residential, institutional, industrial, comma, and a mixture of any of these uses. I I just would like to see it again be explicit that we would welcome a commercial only, no mixed use PUD and/or a PUD that mixes any of these, and I don't know if it's just using the same language that you're using up above until, which Alex threw out so easily, but I would just love that, and mostly not because it should need it, but because working with the public many times has taught me that now is the time to get ahead of the many questions that you might have, or the way somebody might review it on a website and be like, well, maybe that doesn't apply to me, because I was just thinking of a commercial PUD. Just being explicit is really helpful.
So was C1 unclear, how it's written, or what are you suggesting for a change?
The following types of PUDs are allowed, so the following single or mixed combination of any of the following types are allowed. Like I think it's just the single and/or combination piece, wherever you shove it in to that sentence structure, but I think it's just being explicit about it at every turn will save you.
Okay.
Trouble later. That was my only substantive feedback on on C, you had something, you were going to bring Lucy into the room?
C2.
Go for it.
Contract zones, uh, contract should be singular.
Good catch. Any other content on C that the planning board wanted to lift up or have questions about?
Can I say on two?
Go ahead.
On number two and number six, is it possible that you can combine that as to one? Because it seems confusing that you're saying it's it's allowed in all zones, and then all of a sudden you say on number six that it's only allowed, disallowed in shoreline zones.
Yeah, that's a great point.
That's a good one.
So you're thinking of combining six with two, is that the one?
So, yeah, number, number two says it's all, number six says it's only in this zone in certain cases.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's saying that only the open space can be in the shoreline zone, we could definitely move six and combine it with two.
Number six is saying not open space but everything else. With the exception of open space?
No portion of a planned unit development may be within a shoreline zone except for open space.
Thank you.
And we can flip the order if that sounded better and made more sense, because I think it did sound.
I do, I do think that that made more sense.
Yes.
So PUD can be in a shoreline zone.
Yes.
Portion of, just open space portions.
That, that makes sense.
Right.
So then maybe not commingling them, because that might be confusing if it sounded like it wasn't allowed in shoreline zones in number two.
I think if we were to combine it with number two, it would be, a PUD is allowed in all zoning districts, including contract zones. However.
No, and including shoreline zones, when it's included in shore, when it's in a shoreline zone, only.
That's where I was going with that, that's where I was going with the however.
So I think you wouldn't change the first part of two, other than what we've already noted, but you might say after criteria.
Put a little parenther.
However, shoreline zone.
Yeah.
Yep.
Positive sentence structure and negative, because that made, did make sense.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Great catch, Roger.
Just bumping back up to one, uh, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of these in the document, uh, PUDs is not possessive, there's no apostrophe.
Thank you.
That S.
Yeah, we should do a find and replace for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Just a reminder that section C goes on, subsection C goes on to the next page, anything else in C1 through eight? Did you have anything specifically, Shelley and Greg? Then.
Well, also, you know, uh, when you use planned unit development, it should either be PUD all across the board or planned unit development, not lowercase planned unit development, uppercase planned unit development, PUD somewhere else, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, introduce it as an acronym in the beginning and then just make it PUD throughout. Mr. Markcott?
And number five is the use of the word theme is designed to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll pick something consistent for next time and then we'll change everything to it.
I have some feedback on that specifically eh, when we come to the density bonuses section. Because I think, um, I think what theme organizing principle is versus where it's like a criteria is part of where it feels sticky for me, in terms of clarity. Okay, D on page two.
Oh, just one really quick question about C7. Is that just, if Public Works recommends it, then a PUD must set aside space for future road trailer path?
Yeah.
That one didn't feel super clear to me, the way it was phrased.
Okay. Maybe comment when recommended by Public Works?
Yes, that might be better.
Yeah.
If.
Yeah, either.
Can I go back to number four?
Yeah.
Says development shall have at least five units, I can understand residential and commercial, but can you give us an example of industrial?
Yeah, so I mean, you could have a large building that's split up into leased spaces, so it has, you know, let's say three leased spaces in one building and another building that has two leased spaces in it. Same thing with commercial, like if you think of like more of a traditional strip mall where you have a building and you have multiple units. So it's no different than like a living space that you would rent, it's a, you know, business location you would run.
I think it's the addition of and, and two large buildings or two or more detached buildings that.
Yeah, but it says each, each building, each unit, it should have five units, each building should have five units.
No.
No, each development.
The development shall have at least five units, so the the whole scheme should have five units, and within that development, there should be at least two detached buildings, so it could be, you know, four and one, whatever.
Anything else on C? D?
I I read through D and then D and E a couple of times, and I think um just structurally, when it's, when it's finished, I wondered two things, one, if you could um have additional standards and modifications together and do um subsections to sort of lay it out easier to the eye, to flow through um those those different elements um that are in that, just all in that paragraph that I had to go back and forth a little bit. So that was just more structure than content.
So if I understand you, you're suggesting combining D and E together? Okay.
And I don't know if that, if that would mess it up in other ways, but some of this stuff, sorry, some of the stuff in E seemed to relate back to some of the things that were being stated in D, or it just had a flow to it.
So the order that we have, we're suggesting in C that in order to have a PUD, these are like the standards or the restrictions. And then D is saying there's this additional standard for mixed-use developments. So I do feel like D fits more with C than it does with E.
Yeah. What was it that made me?
Is it that last line in D that sort of makes you think about modifications?
Yeah, I just, it seemed like modifications started to get introduced in that section D. And so some of the content in E seemed consistent with the way you were making exceptions or in the, towards the end of D.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Sort of a process question about D, like when we were actually going through and approving this. So, you know, the way it reads to me is like, here's the rules, but actually they don't matter. Like, that's what the last line says, is you, we could give you a pass if, if you give us a good enough reason, right? And so, and from my understanding of how we're doing this, like everything, like there isn't a by right way of doing this, right? You can't, there isn't a way that you fill out the application and it just goes to staff and the staff says, good to go, board doesn't need to look at it, right? Every project's gonna cross our desk. So in a lot of ways, like, you know, the percentage of one use versus another use doesn't really matter. You know, we will maybe be more favorable to things that are in that 80/20 rule, but like, at the end of the day, it's what we care about. So in a lot of ways, this doesn't mean anything, right? Like, it doesn't get you anywhere. I think it maybe if there was a way that we could phrase it as like, it's probably a good idea to stick to this general ratio, but like, again, we're here for good ideas, but that's just more stuff for people to read. I think being able to just say like, mixed use, anything goes.
Yeah, actually, we did have a question about whether we should eliminate section D or not. So one of our concerns is that we may not be able to allow additional uses than what are already in the zoning district. That may not be a modification that's gonna be possible with this ordinance. And if that's the case, then it makes sense that we would just eliminate this section. And then the question is like, do you still think the section is useful anyway? So if, if it's not, like if you feel like you would rather see them come forward with what they propose and justify why they need that much commercial in a potentially all-residential district. But if it, if there, if it's not something that you're gonna be able to do anyway, and that's a question staff is gonna have, I think, when we talk to legal about how realistic that is, whether that's actually a use variance or not.
Why don't you just take, whether or not you delete D or not, take the last sentence out of D and put it in E as number one, and say, the board may consider granting higher percentage of non-residential teams, whatever. And then number two is modification limitations, number three is the review criteria for modifications. That way, D stands alone as it is, as its own standard, right? It's an additional standard. And then the modifications to the standards are, well, here's one modification, here's a modification limitation, here's another criteria for, review criteria for modifications. Seems to me that would make much more sense.
Okay, what do people think? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a, I have a thing on D that I appreciate, I'm hearing you say you're questioning the value of it in general. I'm not entirely sure what, what, what was your goal that you were trying to achieve with D? Because if it's, I can see the value of us, and I, this might be in the further content, but us not having to look at a, a PUD and say, okay, well, there's 3% commercial and eight, like if it's about making sure that the numbers are observable enough to not say, oh, they put a, you know, takeout coffee counter and called it commercial use, and you're wanting to have a minimum. Just all of the percentages and the way it's framed in this, I think what I would love to see is, for any mixed-use developments, we want each use to range between 20 and 80%. Like, any, any use needs to be no less than 20 and no more than 80, combining to 100. And if the goal of that is to make review easier, so that we're not looking at 3% and 7%, and like, I can get behind that and that makes sense. But the no more than, and then the no less than, and then the maximum of 20, like, I almost want a chart from this paragraph, and I don't, I think we could just simplify the, like, whatever you're trying to convey there might drive what would make this easier to read and for us to apply.
Yeah.
Like, if the value is about our ability to not assess a development that's got, I've got 5% misuse and 10 and 15 and across the board, and I don't, I haven't heard us in any discussion say, like, A, we're open to single use, right? B, we're open to mixed use and there was no maximum on mixed use. Like, if you can get industrial and commercial and residential to all work in the same space with some opens, like, great, let's see it. And so I don't, whatever the value that this is trying to drive at, I would try to state that value.
I like that. Yeah, and I'm not sure anymore what the value is, like, that's what I'm struggling with.
Keep holding that question. If you don't come up with a good answer, ax it. Ax, like, cut it, not, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also on team ax here, but I think one thing that I heard you say that I was like, oh, that is a good idea. I think maybe there is some value to us having sort of a clear explanation of how much space is being devoted to each, so like, maybe the additional standard for mixed-use developments is your proposal document sort of outlines how everything is divided up and why, why you have the things you do. Like, why, you, you gotta tell us why it all, why, why mixed use is important, rather than just like, well, you know, this is closer to a bigger road, so we're gonna put a 7-Eleven there, and then there's some single family, and then this other bit's close to an industrial park, so we'll put some industrial there.
And just, I mean, our experience, my experience with our work around the glazing percentages in the design district, kind of nightmare, right? And so like, the reason I'm asking is if these percentages matter so that we're going to be using that level and type of math as criteria in a, I don't want to look at someone and be like, well, it's actually 18% commercials, we're gonna reject it. And, and honestly, if there is a PUD that comes before us with open space and pedestrian, whatever, and has some industrial in the back, and then they do put in a tiny little coffee shop in the front, because that's what this neighborhood is gonna want to keep going, I don't care if it's 5%, it's a coffee shop and it's 200 feet or whatever. And so it, like, what is the importance of percentages? And if it's not actually that important, it's just more about knowing what the uses are and how much square footage is dedicated to them, or how many units is dedicated to them, then let's use that kind of metric in a way that serves the purpose, I guess.
Question for the board, do we care about in multi-use scenarios? You know, in my mind, it was sort of like, oh, we're doing multiple uses in this planned unit development, because they all interact with each other. Is that something we care about? Like, for example, in this hypothetical coffee shop, single-family, industrial PUD, like, do those all have to interact with each other, or can they be sort of for external things outside the development? And, you know, it doesn't really matter about the interrelation.
I mean, I think.
I'm kind of leaning towards the latter, but wanted to hear from other people.
I think the language that we've gotten here and what we've talked about previously is that the application and the development design itself is incentivizing, and one of our criteria is the way they're connected, whether that's pedestrian pathways or everybody can have lunch around the pond, and the pond is the common space. But there's some organizing principle, and it might not be commerce. It could be pedestrian pathways, it could be mobility.
Shared infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I mean, I did hear us say that, and I, even the language we've already reviewed tonight has that in there, in my mind.
I would also say that it seems like it was really important that it matters, the interaction with the abutters or the community in addition to internal within that district, that development.
So maybe this is sort of like, tell us the breakdown and how it interacts with the, the development and the surrounding community?
But I could see, for example, saying achieving a goal of reduced infrastructure demand and them saying, look, we reduced our infrastructure to demand, but none of these things have anything in common with each other. They're just, just efficiently using this space, right?
Yeah.
I got this warehouse over here, and I have this coffee shop over here, and I got that house over there, and who cares that they don't interact with each other?
And I think it would be great to state that.
Right.
I think, I think just like, you know, percentage is an intention, maybe that's what we're looking for under multi-use. Did we, I was just thinking about this, are we talking about agricultural at all with any of this, or do we wanna?
We have not, it has been common space.
It is in B, as one of the organizing principles, is open space, what is that, opens?
Yeah, four, number four.
Open space for recreation, conservation, I should say, or agriculture, not and.
Yeah.
And I think also the agriculture could come into play.
Like in C1, maybe?
Oh, yeah, we should definitely mention it in C1, thank you. Yes, we should add it there.
That's good.
Yep, thank you.
We good on D and E, because we took those together?
I do have some E questions. But it sounds like for D, we are gonna ax the 2080 requirement, but we are going to ask them to provide in the application the percents for each and why they're using mixed use.
Okay.
Or, or no?
Does it matter that it's percent? Is it overall square footage? Because then we get into, is it percent of developed versus open space, does that have total acreage? And like, do we care about percent, or do we care about the number of square feet being developed for each use and/or preserved? And I, I don't know, but the percentages have been wonky for applicants to get and for us to assess.
So square feet.
And so, yeah, I mean, just something, because they're gonna have to do that for their designs anyway. So being able to say, this has 32 units in three buildings, X amount of units and square feet are dedicated A, B, and C.
Yeah, because all we want to know is like, it's mostly this, it's some of that, and it's a little bit of this.
And they're gonna get taxed on square foot and not on percent anyway, so it maybe helps the tax assessor down the road, I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I just hate the percent game. It has not worked out for glazing.
Yeah.
You had a question for E?
I do. So we think it might be necessary that, so for example, in E1, which might become E2 if we move that sentence above it down, but anyhow, in the currently written E1, there's a sta, a statement that says, you know, that there's this flexibility for the modification. Am I in the right spot?
I don't know, but if we're talking about flexibility, which might be what we're getting at in this entire area, I'd love for us to say it.
Okay, so.
Because we're not used, like, there is nothing in, like, part of, and I know this goes back to like inspirational, spiritual language or whatever, but in our desire to be flexible with applicant designs, we will consider.
Yeah, so the language right now, it says, you know, layout dimensional area requirements may be altered by the planning board. So we think that we may need to have a set amount of flexibility, that having it just be open-ended where there's no number is, is problematic. So given that, I know that Auburn has a 25%, I believe it is, that they use. I was looking for some guidance on what you think is a reasonable amount of flexibility that would be granted if they have a PUD, if they need it. So we also think that there may actually have to be some sort of a, a practical difficulty that they're showing to get that leniency and flexibility.
If it's a percent, it's a percent of what?
Right.
It's a percent of the standard, it's a percent of the, so 25% above and beyond the maximum allowed?
Of lot size, of frontage, of impervious surface, whatever the standard is that they're asking for flexibility on.
And that would be per each zone, like the zones already have their requirements, so then it would be a percentage of, of those?
It would depend, so if you had a parcel that had different zoning districts, then yes, you would kind of potentially treat each section of it. Typically, you're gonna have one zoning district on a parcel, so it would not be an issue. But there are times when things are split zoned.
Right, but I guess I was actually asking about the like, you know, this district has these frontage and lot size requirements, and so the percentage that you're talking about would pertain to those.
So like, in residential, you have to have a 50-foot minimum frontage, right? And so this would allow you to be 25% less than that, so whatever 25% of 50 is.
Right, and in highway business, let's say it's 100 feet, then it would be 25% less of 100 feet.
Okay. Others, before I jump in?
I have a, like, an overall thematic thing that sort of popped up looking at these.
That we want to answer. Anyone else with Shelley's specific question? Or a dive in? Okay, diving in. So I would love this language to be more clear for the intent of usability and somebody to say, wow, this is a really workable ordinance, and I want to do a PUD. Instead of, oh my God, I need a code finder to understand what this is trying to tell me, because I think it's trying to be flexible. So I'd love it to read a little bit more plainly, obviously check with a lawyer, but like, we, the planning board is authorized to modify or amend limitations in a desire to be flexible, like, throw in the extra words that make it nice and understandable. The part that I'm struggling with can have up to 25% of the restrictive standard to be, because so like, the may be altered makes it sound like, okay, it's 100 feet that you're required, and we're actually gonna require up to 25% more and make it hard, we're gonna move the goalposts. And so, and I get why you can't say expanded, because in some places the restriction is, could be reduced, and that's the benefit, right? And in others, it could be expanded, and that's the benefit. And so in whatever way, that could come across just really clearly, right? So the planning board is authorized to work with applicants to up to 25% of the restrictive standard for each criteria element, right? Like, something like, so you don't have to have a chart here that says like, this much for this much for this much. Maybe your, your bulk use chart, that like big massive chart, could be a place where there's a PUD version of that that shows the flexibility for each one. But in this space, just saying like, we want to be flexible and we have the ability to up to 25% variance from the restriction of the standard.
Yeah, like, we can reduce the restriction by 25%?
Alleviate.
Alleviate?
Right, like, something.
Something that doesn't make it seem like it's just.
Yeah, deviate, something that lets it go in either direction, to the benefit of the applicant.
Yeah.
Like, and maybe you even state that, because that, just the language may be altered by is like, maybe today the planning board's having a bad day, and we're gonna, gonna take you 25% in the other direction. And I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the goal.
We didn't like the font used, so.
So, and then, and in whatever way you can just simplify the language, I, I'm gonna say that a couple times tonight, but throughout.
I'm gonna jump on those coattails with my general comment. There's a lot of sort of like bad dog language, you shall not do this, you shall not do that. For example, B, or what is this, E2B, granting of the modification shall not be in conflict with the comprehensive plan like.
You jump to page three, right?
Yep, we're on page three. Instead of saying like, it won't be in conflict, like, it should be in agreeance with.
Yeah.
Right, or.
Will align with.
You know, granting of the modification shall have a neutral or positive effect upon the environment, public health, safety, or blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
You know.
That's good.
Net posi, you know, just sort of, again, like, people will take us to be more flexible if we are saying like, here's all the good things we expect you to do, rather than don't, don't do all these bad things.
Anything else on E1 from page two? All right, moving on, because we were going there anyway, thanks so much, Alex. Review criteria for modifications starts number two on the bottom of page two and moves. and moves, um, throughout the next page. Thoughts, questions? I do think that having it framed in the positive is helpful.
It's kind of like a double whammy, right? Like, like, here's the criteria, but then also, here's some more criteria. I almost wonder if that, uh, FG and H could almost be like part of the like, each modification request should, you know, or the applicant should demonstrate this, da-da-da-da-da, to meet these following standards. Does that make sense? Am I not? So like, this this little section here, this little second bit, like, I wonder if these are all sort of overarching that apply to these? No?
I think the FG and H is specifically, I I do think this is where simple language could be beneficial, but you're, um, all modification requests will meet the following criteria and then, and when, uh, request is inclusive of, it must also meet this criteria. Because what you're getting at with FG and H is if you're squeezing a use into your PUD that's not allowed in the zone that you're in, then you must also do these things. And for every PUD, you have to do the ones that come first. And so I think like, for all applicants, for all PUD uses, you must meet. And for, and if you are proposing a PUD with uses that do not fall in the zones that you are operating in, you must also meet this.
Yeah, just a good way to sort of like front that part so that if you know that you're not doing that, you're like, okay, I can skip these.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say F gets a little bit at what you, at what we were talking about before, kind of the relationship. We were talking about relationship between uses and the purpose and organizing principles statements, and so this might be an area where you look to either align any changes you make or to think about how that comes back around. Plan notes? Anybody got anything?
We're in the same, so we're in review criteria for modifications and then
Yeah, it does feel like a weird thing.
This is just like notes for your your plans?
Well, so what I think it is, is, um, all modifications granted shall be noted as such. And so this is still about the, and so I, I mean, it's just maybe the heading, plan notes. And I don't know, that might be customary and how we do it throughout.
It's not, it was, uh, we just
Yeah.
It it was what it was and we hadn't thought of a better way to say it yet.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you need A or B. For all modifications approved for your PUD, they will be blah, blah, blah. And it, I don't know that you need an A and B, I don't know that it needs its own section, it's most like, like a footnote to your modification section.
Because this three is basically just saying like, if you do modifications, you need to put them on your plans.
That's right.
Okay.
This is, once this has been approved, this is how it's eternalized. Like, it's a process now for
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it kind of feels like it should just be its own little paragraph at the end and it's
For all modifications above that are approved.
Yeah.
One must.
Put them on the plan.
Yep.
We'd love to see it on a plan.
Document it, that's it. Okay. Are we good to go on to density bonuses? This is where the fun with percentages really start. Density bonuses covers through till open space requirements. And I'm not entirely sure that's accurate, but I gotta be honest with you, the height bonus feels like it is part of a density bonus. I'm not sure numbering wise. I think it's meant to be that way, right? Density bonus is one, residential housing density, two, affordable and workforce housing density, skip all the way down, three, height bonus. All of that is under
There's three sections under density bonus. That's right.
Okay, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
All right.
That's how we wrote it.
Okay, just making sure. Yeah, yeah. Thoughts, questions from all things density bonus?
I thought we were gonna have one in here for owner occupied units.
We did. So actually, this is probably the section that changed most dramatically from when we had met with you. So as staff looked at it, um, there were a lot of things in this section and it was chaotic and I think gonna be hard for everyone to manage. Um, so we decided to to kind of pare it down to the kind of most important elements. But if we've missed one, then I think that that is totally something we can look at. I guess the question is, um, you know, what does that look like? So an element of that is in two for affordable and workforce housing. Um, in B, when it's an ownership unit. So we do have elements of it for the affordable and, um, and workforce.
So it's on this area that specifically, page four, section F2, item B, for affordable and workforce ownership units, that Amy has some input. Would you like me to share that now?
Um, give me just a moment because Craig wanted to say something to me and I couldn't listen to both of you at the same time. Yeah, okay. So with, um, F1, the residential housing density bonus, um, is related, it says, to the strategies being employed to meet the, um, organizing principles from B. And one of those organizing principles is ownership opportunities. So we could actually give that a call out in the types of strategies that we list as as possible, you know? Um, so we we think that F1, which is a thirty percent bonus, could go towards ownership, um, if that's one of the the theme, or you know, if that's one of their organizing principles for it. Um, and then the question becomes, would they also be eligible for additional bonuses if it's affordable and workforce? So probably yes, I don't know. I don't know if that answers it, Mark, for you or not.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna, if we can, if it can be fall under F1, then that's fine. If we put it specifically in there, that'd be fine.
It makes more, I'm, uh, the last sentence seems real long. Starts with types of strategies may include and then ends with more organizing principles, so it feels a little muddied.
Yeah.
In one sentence, and the last part of that sentence is the place where based on the language included in the last part of that sentence, owner occupancy would be most logical to fit in.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure what that last bit's doing.
Okay, yeah, we can try to clean that up and I think it would probably be types of strategies may include but aren't limited to, right? I mean, that was the intent. Here's a few examples with this, this aren't the only things you can, you know, do.
Yep. Is it deemed beneficial by the city or is it deemed beneficial or deemed, um, goals or strategies by the city's comp plan? Like, in terms of, is it the planning board and we're deeming it that way? Or is it the city and there's a vote by all citizens? Like, I just don't know what language you want there, but it's probably not the city.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think I think it's section B. That's, you know.
Yeah, when we say goals, we're talking about our our guiding principles.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just then
Say that.
By the purpose of this ordinance.
Yeah.
Right? And not like, is the mayor council, is it, who's the city is deeming it? If it has already been deemed in this, then reference that section and don't make it seem like that's a step for the process.
Yeah.
We need a city mascot that we can reference.
I think this is goo-, I think this is likely to be one of your questions because you, I think, literally have a question mark in it. So I'm gonna share Amy's feedback for you now. Um, so I'm just gonna read what she wrote. For affordable and workforce ownership units, again, this is, um, page four B, towards the middle of the page. She disagrees with putting a ten-year affordability limit on resale. When a buyer purchases a starter home for its fair market value, no matter what it costs to build that unit, that owner should be able to participate in all appreciation or financial upside of owning the unit and should be able to sell it for whatever the market will bear. You could have a limited time restriction to discourage flipping, but it should be in the three to five year range, which is a typical ownership duration for a starter home. I can give you more, her organization, which also has ownership occupancy clauses, um, uses a shared model over years. So if they sell it in one to twelve, then they get to keep twenty-five percent of their profit if they sell it and
I think that would be helpful because the the hope is that there's continues to be affordability in the city and that this isn't like a one and done and three years later, everything is market rate in the development. So I think it would be nice to have some sort of a graduated system where things eventually become market rate, if that's the intent of the board.
Well, I would also say if it's, if it is, if it's as long as ten years and or if it's not graduated, I I think the goal's not just affordability, it's affordability and people being able to buy it, like actually have the inventory to buy. If there's ten years and I have no incentive to sell it, I'm not leaving that home and it is not actually
Yeah.
It was only, yeah, it was only a starter home inventory for me.
Hmm.
And now it's my permanent home because you've given me no reason to sell it and I'm gonna lose everything.
Hmm.
So if the goal is for it to create starter homes, then you want mobility out of it and you don't want to disincentivize somebody moving out.
And like, part of the reason why homeownership is so important in the US is appreciation and being able to like leverage the asset to keep going.
And currently, you have people living in houses that far exceed their need, but because of the market rate
Yeah.
for for mortgages, they can't get into a downsized home, so they can't afford to leave.
Hmm.
And that is locking up our overall housing inventory, so you don't want to accidentally disincentivize the the mobility of that market.
We want houses that people can get into and grow out of, right?
Yeah, and if you're giving them some portion of the equity, then they can also buy a new home. Or build it.
Yeah.
Start start a common living situation. Doesn't really matter, but they'll move it. That was Amy's feedback. I concur. I think the ten years is too much. I would like to see three to five. I wouldn't be opposed to a sharing model and I would name, you've got language in that for some of the city's lending programs and the more you can align with how the city is doing it in other departments.
Okay.
And I know because I was fortunate enough to benefit from one of those programs once upon a time. So I think my restriction was like five or seven years. And and it's not that I couldn't sell it, it's that if I did sell it, some of the proceeds would have to go back to the city so they could continue to do that program. Right? Um, I struggled with the framing of this section from developments at the top of the page down. Is it a requirement or is it an incentive? So the structure here makes it sound like it's a requirement and yet the whole thing's kind of optional.
It's definitely an incentive, yeah.
And so like, we've got shells, so when a, when this, then this benefit, when this, then this benefit.
Yeah.
As a structure, instead of you must, you must, you must, and this whole thing's predicated on like, actually, you don't have to do anything but one of these and you can choose your own adventure. And so that, I would just love for it to be more, and and this goes in with some of the stuff that Alex was giving you for feedback too, but like, not just like positive fluffy friendly, but like also in a, in a like, you can have this and this and this when you do this, instead of you must do these things, which is
Totally agree.
You know what I mean?
If you do this, then you get these things.
Yeah.
If you do this, then you get these things.
Carrots.
If you do both these things, then you get all of the things.
These benefits are stackable.
Yeah, I said it.
But I think it's that kind of language that you are looking for.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that makes sense.
Anyone else threw in on down to height bonus?
I did have a question on F2. Um, and I guess what I wanted to call out was that in this section, staff's intent was with the sixty percent, um, so in LD two thousand and three, which most of you were here for the adoption of coming into compliance with that state law, um, there's a two hundred and fifty percent density bonus for affordable housing projects that's required by the state when they meet certain requirements. So our thought was, that seems like a sufficient density bonus for projects that meet those criteria. Um, this sixty percent was for projects that don't meet that criteria because that has a thirty-year requirement for affordability and so forth. So this would be a different standard that people would have to meet, um, which is more what you're talking about. So it has a, you know, different timeline, whatever that timeline ends up being and so forth. Um, so just wanted to make that clear and if, um, it sounds like everybody understood that, but I just wanted to point that out and and we still, I think, then are gonna need to define affordable housing and workforce housing and how that differentiates from the two hundred and fifty percent standard. So just pointing that out.
Great.
Cool.
Um, this is, it's language. One, two, and one and two are about density bonuses and then three is about a height density. And I think like just making that more explicit, like, um, density from height bonus.
Hmm.
Because realistically, the, it's a density bonus because they could go up more and get more in. Um, but I would just link it to the density language that the other ones are. Yeah, something like that. I know that sounds a little wonky, but I was like, why are we talking about height when we're talking about density in this section? And the reality is you're gonna get density out of another floor or two for sure. But maybe just saying it.
Yep.
Okay. Um, open space requirements, moving on. Thoughts? I see the question mark in G1 already, so I'm gonna assume we're gonna touch on that, but did anyone from the planning board come with anything related to this section that you wanted to lift up? Farming is in here again. Return to page.
And we're, okay, and the definition of open space is that second sentence in one, so G1, second sentence. Is that, because like, you know, fif- fifty percent of the the lot is lawns or something like that? I I I'm just wondering, uh, yeah, if we're gonna do fifty percent, then what what is the percentage? What are we counting? The metric really starts to matter.
So we need a definition of open space, essentially.
Yeah, and I would assume we already have one. That we could reference.
I'm gonna, let me see what we have. Not sure. I've had to look up
I would say that it's very likely that whatever definition you find is not gonna speak to the cultural parts that we had conversations about and which are
Yes.
featured in there. So you're gonna want a definition that builds on that and is inclusive of cultural components.
Yeah, and it's probably related to the cluster subdivision, um, or other kind of subdivision. So open space means that portion of a lot which is characterized by natural scenic beauty or openness and which is dedicated to being preserved or kept open in order to enhance urban or rural areas as important physical, social, recreation, conservation, aesthetic, or economic assets. So actually, there's some flexibility in there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, it's pretty solid.
Yeah.
I just, then, it it's kind of like the burying of the lead with the, to be a public benefit.
I'm sorry, the burying of what?
The the lead, the, to be a public benefit. Like, the the requirement is, and the criteria in turn that we're using to assess the criteria for someone trying to get open space bonuses is not just that there's space that open, but that space that is open is serving a public benefit.
Yeah.
And I think the question there is the difference between the open space that we would see under this as a public benefit, i.e., people outside of the planned unit development can i.e. people outside of the planned unit development can access it because it's public. Or common benefit for those who would be able to benefit from it. So like, you've got a pond, we're in the shoreline, we're good with that and the public can't make it to that shoreline, but it's a really nice common area feature. It's gonna boost the price of that, right? So like, common versus public and being really clear on that, I think's gonna be really helpful.
Yeah, I like the idea of like fifty percent of the lot area of the entire parcel for open space for public benefit. I think that's a really good call out.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you're both okay with, with public benefit being an element of this, not just community benefit? You, you like it how it's written?
And I would use common versus community. So if common is like in the way that the mailroom is common when we're looking at large multifamilies and there's a gym and that's a common area, but no one from the street can just walk in and use the gym. It's a benefit and we count it as area that benefits the residents of the development, but we recognize that any resident isn't able to benefit from it, from the community. Whatever language we have around that, I think in the design, you might just consistently use the same piece. So this goes back to my requirement piece. And our theme versus organizing principle versus purpose versus, and how we're assessing it. So if somebody's, you know, on page one and they're like, yeah, love it. I'm gonna reduce negative impacts, create common space, create open space and twenty-five percent of my fifty acres is trails that lets you go to the pond. But, but it was a requirement to be fifty and a requirement of what? Because our, again, sticker, and so like, why, why would we put a percent in? And what, so if, and I'm not against a requirement, but to receive the X bonus associated with the open space purpose or goal or organizing principle, then X amount must be dedicated towards. I mean, we're using that kind of language in homeownership and residential and other places. But like, how are we linking the requirement to the benefit? And then is it really a requirement and more like to unlock this benefit you must dedicate? Do you know what I mean?
I do, and that might be a, where there's a mismatch when we had simplified the bonus section, the density bonus section, because I think there was a density bonus for going above and beyond the required amount of open space if you were having an organizing principle as open space for your PUD. So, yeah, part of the reason for the question marks was staff had started to think, should there be a minimum?
Right.
At all, or if there is, you know, is fifty to ten percent, like, I don't know. So we're just kind of questioning that.
You can't put up a sculpture and a tree and then unlock all of these other benefits of the design, right? And so I'm for it being clear, but can we assess it? Can it, if it's percent, why and what number? Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I wonder, sort of to your point of like, this theme unlocks these benefits. Like, it almost feels like, and I know you were saying that it was kind of a mess when you first got into the document, but like, it's almost like we have, you know, guiding principles, one through whatever, one through eight. So there should be eight sections. So like, section one, efficient land use, what does that look like? And this is what it gets you in terms of density bonus, because that's really the only bonus we can give, right? Is density. We don't really have another carrot to give people under this.
We can reduce the restrictions, we can provide flexibility. So like, you didn't mean your road fundage, for example.
Okay, good.
Right, so like, there's other places that we can offer flexibility from the codes on the books.
Yeah.
To this end, for this purpose.
So I wonder if almost like a complete restructuring where you have eight sections and it's just, this, this is the standard for this, this guiding principle. And like, for me, I think about it in terms of like, you kind of want the benefit to match the thing. So like, you have public transportation, well, we're gonna unlock a ton of density for that because we know, you know, public transportation needs density. Whereas, we're not gonna unlock, or we'll, maybe we'll unlock height density for natural space because you build up, not out.
Yeah, I, I do think organizing the document that way would make it so much more approachable, not just for you, but for us and the applicant. So if somebody came in and is like, I'm really trying to, to make sure there's affordable housing and open space and we're like, cool, that's three and five, and those are the sections that we're in. And for them, they're like, great, I need to do these things in number three and these things in number five and I'm gonna get that and that, awesome. I just think from, from them understanding what the application is asking and how to take advantage of this, your ability to prep an application and an applicant for us and then our ability to say, well, so you didn't do open space? Okay, great, you did industrial, but you're trying to do commercial in there? Cool, we're gonna look at that and your density is this. You get the full density, nice job. I can see the kind of tit-for-tat tracking of that being much easier for all parties.
Yeah, you said your themes were this, we're gonna judge you to these standards and you get the best of each section. So, you know, the density bonus is higher for open space, so you get that. And the frontage is better for transit, so you get that. There you go. You've met the requirements.
Yeah, it's good feedback. Hopefully, it's straightforward to put together. I think that's gonna be the challenge is when some benefits are gonna be for these three, you know, like when it's not a straight, this is this, this is this, this is this. So that's gonna be the challenge, we'll see how it kind of pulls together. But we can look at that as an alternative.
And I would advocate, unless the board disagrees, that we have sort of like a, you, you know, if you, you're applying for four themes and you match all four themes, then you get the, the best of each category. So, you know, each theme's gonna talk about density, it's gonna talk about setback, it's gonna talk about this. Some of those themes may not get you anything in those realms.
Organizing principles?
Yeah, your organizing principles, sorry. Some, some of those organizing principle, you know, meeting that section won't get you anything. You know, you're not gonna get setback adjustment for, I don't know, community space or something, I don't know. But, you know, just letting people know that they can sort of apply to all of those different ones and assemble a host of benefits. That's sort of the best of each, I think would, that's my, what I understand to be our intent.
If you keep it laid out like this, then you should do a chart for us that looks more like that. That is like an addendum for them.
Yeah, a chart's gonna be essential if we're going this direction.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because it's a little choose-your-own-adventure.
Yeah.
Which we want, we don't wanna make it harder. Zoe?
I would say that as you go through and see if you are able to structure it that way, it's possible that like, it might make it more obvious if maybe some of those eight guiding principles might get collapsed down slightly. Like, I don't know if they will, but if you're like, well, the benefits of doing this one and that one are really the same benefits, then maybe that's the same guiding principle distilled down some other way, just.
Smart use of city resources might be one that brings a couple together.
Yeah.
You know? I think that's a great point, Zoe. I was wondering that without having all the knowledge, looking at all those numbers. Are we feeling good about open space? I don't know what the right numbers should be, Shelley, but I'm happy to chat about it when you bring it back.
Okay.
Because I think it'll be more like to, to the Y piece for me, that that'll speak.
Yeah, well, because I, I think one last note about that percentage thing. Like, I don't think we would treat square footage equally, right? Like, if it's a pond versus forest, like, you know, I think a pond can provide, can possibly provide more community benefit in a smaller space than forest. Just making that up, you know, maybe our professional forester would disagree with me. Take me to task later, Zoe. But, um, yeah, I, I think, yeah, sort of blanket percentage stuff starts to get a little weird.
It, your number four at the top of page five, without having article thirteen in front of me, like, that might be the benefit. Right, like, we're, we're replacing requirements with something easier or better or more flexible and like, that's the. Do you know what I mean? Anyway. Everybody good, all the way down to required middles? This is when we get to the process points that Shelley asked us to pay attention to at the beginning, everybody? All right, so concept review. Any questions there, folks? Does this make sense? Can you see us doing this step?
I mean, for a description of proposed theme slash themes, because you could have multiples.
I mean, I, I don't wanna wordsmith it because I think you've captured a bunch from the conversation we've had today, but I think it's around intent and how you're asking them to give us the guidance on what they want us to see, what they're proposing, right? Like, I think that piece.
I would be a little worried about H1C being, maybe feeling a little daunting as an applicant. Because like saying may require, it's sort of like, well, will they or will they not, uh, you know?
Well, and would they, so we might require after the concept review, but like, the, the sentence that starts with the board may require is not something that's required in the concept review, right?
Um, I guess it depends. My thought for concept review is if.
It can't be something we may require if we're not requiring it until after it's come in front of us the first time.
I don't think you are though, because if you're approving that use as part of the concept, you would need to know that information about it to decide that the use is compatible. So I would think now is the time.
Well, then it wouldn't be may.
Yeah. Well, you may, you might decide it's not necessary for them to submit any of those things.
I think that needs to be.
But we only get to make that decision once they've submitted it in there in front of us.
Yeah, and so maybe the concept review isn't a one and done meeting. I, I don't know.
So if you're gonna, if we're gonna think.
It's okay for them to come forward and not bring that information. Or they might say to staff, do you think they're gonna need XYZ? And based on what it is, we say, well, you know, we definitely think this and not sure about that and they could come and have, I think there's in here, further on, when we talk about application and board reviews on page six, I, there's a pre-application conference with the board is optional and we will be scheduled, you know, at their request. So I think that's when they would ask you, like, we're gonna wanna do XYZ use, what are you gonna wanna see? And then they say, well, tell us more about this use and how much of the lot is gonna be that use and, you know, what are you planning for? You know, what type of drive-through restaurant might it be or drive-through user? You know, then you can get more details so you can say, oh yeah, we're gonna wanna know our cooperation in this.
So I, I don't, I don't know about that maybe, but I think the, um, a written request, so number letter C, a written request and justification, yada, yada. The more, the board may require as a result of the concept review and at the pre, the following. And so like, I, I guess what I'm saying is if I'm the applicant and I'm like, okay, this is what I need to do to get ready, I'm not clear if I need to do that stuff for the concept review. And I hear you saying, well, we can have a follow-up and I, I guess we could, we can do anything, which is why this shouldn't be all those eventualities, it should be how you prepare for the original first concept review. And if we have to have two concept reviews, or if we punt and ask for that follow-up at the pre-application meeting or whatever it's called. Thank you. I love conference, that's great. But I just, I think here it's pretty daunting. And, and frankly, can be really expensive to do some of those things that are included in there. So we don't want them to have like, I don't know, done it proactively and, so I just wonder.
I mean, they're gonna have to do most of these things regarding, when they get to development review anyway. So I guess the question is, do you?
But isn't the point of the concept, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but isn't the point of the concept review for us and them to feel out if this is a feasible concept before they start spending money?
It is, so.
So then I still feel strongly that the, I'm not saying foresee, you could say the following may be required at the concept review to be prepared for the next step. I love that you're trying to warn people, but are you?
You would be telling them at the pre-application meeting, when you come for concept review, if you still wanna do that use, we're gonna wanna see this.
So is concept review number one, but it's actually the second part in the process?
That's what I was thinking.
It, it is, so when you go to the next page on six, you see a pre-application conference, so I, application and board review. A pre-application conference with the board is optional. So I think staff is gonna advise them. If you're looking for a use that's not typically allowed, you need to go to have a pre-application.
I would like to see like a list of like, here's the meetings.
This is not a flow chart at all.
The first thing in this section, because I think.
So move that to the beginning of the session.
So is the, so I'm sorry, so the pre-application conference in your mind is both optional, but is the stage at which we would be hearing from them and telling them, you better come with traffic studies for the concept review?
Yeah, and it's not, did I say a traffic study? I just said traffic estimates, which is like this many hours and it, this many trips in a peak hour. It's a normal thing they put on the application when they apply for development review. So it's not a traffic study.
Okay, that's.
So it's like, we're gonna have a Dunkin' Donuts, there's gonna be three hundred trips on Saturday morning, that's gonna be our busiest time, right? So now you know, oh, this is gonna be big, versus we're redeveloping an existing business, we're gonna have this many, much credits and so it's only gonna be, you know, fifty trips in a peak hour.
Well, then can we just require, so if it's that and it's low barrier, can then we just require it and it's not may?
Yeah, I mean, because I'll, yes.
This justification would include information on hours of operation, noise and visibility, pedestrian safety.
Yeah, because here's the thing, let's say the use is agriculture. Right now, you can only do it commercially in our ag zone, but let's say they wanna do it in the suburban residential. Okay, so we're not gonna make them do most of these things. And that's gonna be, we have a number of criteria in the ordinance anyway that we talk to people about when they go to development review and they'll say, do I really need to submit this? And we say, yeah, no, you don't. Because, because of the specific project and the elements of the project, some things are just not applicable.
So then it's really about what staff is recommending and not what the board is recommending?
It's typically in our ordinance written that you may require it because you're the decision maker. So it's up to you, when it comes before you, to say, this application isn't complete, we need this information. But we typically try to assist an applicant to determine if there's something that seems onerous that we know isn't really necessary.
Or something that's important that they can't skip. That while it says may, we're gonna ask about.
Yeah, and we, and we try to head them up with that and say, you know, you really should address this. They're gonna, they're gonna wanna know. So whether.
Actual first step. Like, can we just take a second and back away from the language? I come into the knock on the third floor, they let me behind the glass door, we sit down and I say, I've got this great idea, it's got a little farm, a little coffee shop, little blacksmithing industrial in the back and some tiny homes. Who do I talk to and what's the process look like? And you would say to me, your first step, your second step, your third step is?
Yeah, so I think in this situation, um, we'd say, okay, great. You know, where are you doing it? We'd see what's currently allowed and we'd say, have you thought about what type of flexibility you're gonna need? You know, what are you actually asking for from the board? Why is this a planned unit development instead of traditional? And we'd ask them to kind of think through that process. And say, okay, well, have you read the PUD ordinance? It requires that you pick an organizing principle or more, have you thought about that? So there's gonna be this upfront discussion that's more than a standard development that we're gonna have to have.
Love it.
And so, once they've gotten to that point where say, you know, the process is, there's an extra step. Normally, you would just go to development review if it's traditional development. In this case, the PUD ordinance layers some additional process on it, which is really no different than if they're doing a subdivision. There's an additional subdivision criteria and narrative they have to prepare. This is similar to that, there's gonna be these additional criteria and narratives they have to prepare. But we will say, you know, you can act, you could definitely go for a pre-application conference with the board. Other projects have done that and you guys have appreciated when they've done that, when it's a big project. And, but obviously, you don't have to. If they're asking for, if it stays in the ordinance, which it may not, but if, if you are able to approve uses that aren't in a zoning district currently, I think then we'll say, you definitely will want to go to a pre-application conference. Depending on what it is. I mean, I think if we think it's super compatible and it's a small amount of the project, then they may be feeling really confident and we may say, yeah, just go, you know, for your concept discussion. Especially if putting together the application, they aren't really spending a lot of extra time or effort and it's, it's not a big deal to them. If it's a real lynchpin to their financing and their capacity to do the project, then absolutely they're coming for a pre-application meeting. then absolutely they're coming for a pre-application meeting with them, so. It'll, it is up to them, you know, it's not required.
Wait, can we hear it out on the-
But we'll, but we'll advise them on that. Um, so then, whether they-
You said, wow, that's wild, that's five uses. Ms. Cox would love to, we're gonna recommend you do a pre-application conference. And I go, that sounds great. That step is still before the concept review.
It is. Then they submit, at that point, they haven't really submitted anything. Then we're envisioning there would be a concept, um, application that would list out, you know, what are your, um, sorry, themes, whatever, organizing principles, what is this, what is that? Um, and so that would, we'd kind of capture that information. Which are you applying for any density bonuses? Are you asking for any modifications, which ones? Um, all of those things. And then they would actually need to, uh, in addition to listing them out, there'd be an explanation. We're asking for you to loosen the road standards because of X, Y, and Z, here's what we're looking to do. Um, so it makes it clear to you as well as to any staff, like public works, that would need to review that, um, the why. So we do have, um, where do we have that?
So I guess maybe this is, this is helpful.
So that's what's at the bottom of page five is the things that we want them to be submitting for the concept review. And the main purpose of that is that you would get a chance to determine if they're, um, if it's, if what they're proposing makes sense as a PUD, if it's providing sufficient benefit and it just doesn't seem like they're just trying to circumvent, you know, the ordinance with a standard subdivision, like you've said. Um, the modification requests, uh, if they do want additional uses, why? And how do they relate to the other uses? The density bonus and open space. So, um, then we envision that they would get an approval. You'll see later on that we have an expiration. We threw a year, we don't know if that's the right time, but it encourages them to come back in for development review.
Just for language's sake.
Yeah.
They would come to the concept review, you envision them getting an approval of the concept.
That's right.
Which would then bring them to a development review.
That's right. That's right. Yep. Um, and then they would have a certain period of time to come in for development review and if they don't, then the concept approval would expire. And here we have one year, so we don't know if that's the right number. We're looking for guidance from you on that.
From concept to development?
Yeah.
That feels right. That's my own input.
So, uh, and then, you know, number three on page six under I is all PUDs require development review approval, which includes final approval of the PUD, um, so.
So then I think this is just sequenced funny and the way you just described it makes a ton of sense, but the way it's written doesn't.
Doesn't, okay.
So I mean, I think it's, um, you know, the, and then maybe it's cuz you've got it under required submittals and maybe it's just process, right? Like you're just naming this as the process and then in each subsection you name what's the required submittal piece of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think that, like, the, you know, I think that makes sense. Uh, your concept review, is it coming with an application and is that the required submittal? And the review is a session? And, and for our own future use, is it a public or not? Like, it shouldn't be public, I would think, at the concept, because don't let the public get up in arms about a thing in which we're literally talking about if it's even feasible, let alone saying, yeah, that's gonna work. And now you, like, so I don't think a public hearing should be in anything other than the development review process.
Yeah, I guess my only concern with that, and so that's a good question, is if you're approving something, um, like giving these modifications or bonuses, you're, you're sort of committing at the concept approval that you're comfortable with those. You might, that's a point at which the public should probably have input. So I guess that's a question like what, how, how binding, how specific do you want your concept approval to be versus the final approval? And that's, I don't know, as I have a great answer to that question, but it is, it is worth spending some time, you know, in the next few months as we're looking at this, figuring out where we wanna land.
I'm picturing the way we collectively, developer, staff, planning board, and public, maybe even some local media, could have some shared accountability, kind of bungled the process of the, the planned project on Charles Street. So like, we received a proposal for a contract rezone for that space. You guys are seeing my faces and I'm seeing yours. I'm trying to be polite here and I'm grateful that that project is providing more housing and moving forward, so cheers to all parties. But part of what we learned in that is a concept was discussed by staff. A contract rezone was suggested that was not attached to an application or anything official. A lot of people couldn't get answers about what their concerns were, including the planning board. And when we said, there's nothing for us to approve and we are not saying yes to this thing that ultimately got there, we're saying yes to you can rezone it and put in a movie theater or a hotel. And that amount of speculation was what led to a lot of heartbreak for neighbors, for staff, for us, um, for the applicant, as we, the ultimate applicant afterwards. And so, I just, I think, and maybe the concept rev- and I'd like, I'm not trying to make it hard on the applicant, so if that, if you feel fundamentally, and I'm hearing you, I don't agree with you, but I'm hearing you. Because I don't feel like we've made a commitment to anything until we've, we've done the final review of the development. I think saying, that's interesting. And before you've dumped a ton of money into architecture plans and wetland plans and whatever else you're gonna do from concept to that development stage, nope, that sounds wackadoodle, we're not open to it. That's the stage, right, that we should be able to say that, they should be able to say that and you don't need forty ticked-off people also saying it, when it was never going anywhere, right? Nor do we wanna put so much pressure on the applicant on that first step that they need to have done all, like, that's the point. I've got a creative idea, I'd like for you to hear it. Cool, interesting idea, yep, yep, not on that section. That should be low stakes. That should not be open for the public to get concerned because we're naming where our concerns are that limits what will even be pursued in the review process. And so, if, if you feel really strongly about that, then maybe the final concept review preceding the development review needs a public hearing. And we're getting an idea from staff about how wild and innovative an idea this is and you're helping choose whether it's in a workshop-y section or a public section, but it just feels like the commitment's not to the review. And we wanna be able to have an open dialogue, right? Like, we're gonna put up a swinging bridge that gets people from A to B and over the pond and we think everybody's gonna love it. And like, we wanna be able to hear that without being able to, I mean, that's the whole point of this whole thing, right? And I think the onus of having to explain it to the public when you're just, before you've hired all of those people to be able to ask. Because I don't wanna design it just for the big developers. We've talked about small scale, we've talked about infill, we've talked about ag. You know what I mean? Like, it just feels, anyway, that's my two cents, I've talked long enough, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, to Shanna's point, um, I think having the pre-application conference be optional, given that this is a new thing for us and it seems like sort of a new thing overall, I have a hard time seeing someone being like, nah, I got this, slam dunk. Like, this, this is a conditional thing, like, it's mushy. And so, I would see if we made that a requirement.
Maybe that's-
For now, I mean, maybe we change it in a year or two. Uh, or three or four, 10, cuz I think this will be slow-going. I think in my mind, like, that's a, that's the lowest stake meeting, where it's just like, is this even an idea? Then, when it becomes concept review, that's where I think, I agree with you that I think that's where, um, some community input could come in. Because like, at that point, like-
Yeah.
You sort of vaguely know, like-
It's not the first shot, right?
Exactly, exactly. Like, we, I think we wanna, we wanna have people just come in with their crazy idea and we say, hey, think about it this way. Or like, that's great, come back to us with specifics. The community can come and say, hey, you know, swinging bridge is gonna make us barf. Uh, let's get something, let's get something a little more stationary. Yeah, like, I, we like the idea, but no kids live in the neighborhood right now, so no one's gonna wanna use it. You know, it would be great to have swan boats instead, right? Like, that's the time for it. And maybe, I don't know if it's something we'd include in here, but something I've seen happen when we have public comment is that it's often very just sort of like, well, you're here to provide comment, like, go for it. And I, and I wonder if there is a mechanism where we can provide some structure for the public. Like, there have been hearings where I've like made a comment as a board member, like, just to let everyone know, like, this, this is what we're responsible for when we're talking about this. We're not talking about these other things. Like, if you need to vent, fine, but like, ultimately, these are the things we're talking about. So, that's to say, pre-application should be mandated and then concept review.
I, I mean, I think it's that.
Structure for public feedback.
I think it's the steps in the process and the way they're laid out in this document, I think, makes that confusing for me too, Shelley.
Okay.
But like, I still get, so you've got if applicable, which makes sense in D and E, under concept review. Any of this whole board may require. And I, and I think maybe as, as requested at the pre-conference.
Yep.
And we still, we still got the opportunity to say that. You still were able to coach them that we're likely to say it and they could just show up with it in the first place. And I think this language would be, like, I think, I would love that to be somebody, something that somebody has to tell us the first time they're telling us their idea. If that's the pre-conference and that's what we're calling it.
Yeah.
Is it open to the public? If so, what are the hours that it's gonna be busy? Like, I think those pieces, give us a sense of it, is part of what we would want to know no matter what. So it's not may, and that's the language I'm struggling with, is the lack of clarity on our expectations, not the expectation itself. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think requiring just sort of like who, what, where, when, for any of these things. You know, even it's like hours of operation for housing, well, it's 24 hours, people come and go as they please. I just, you know, these are not onerous things.
I have no issues with, um, I, two and three. A year makes sense. If somebody gets through the concept approval, they should be able to bring forward a development application in a year's time. Any other thoughts on that section? Does the process make sense as we've talked through it? And we'll see that come in maybe more a chronological layout in the document?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, some communities require that the applicant prepare a traditional site plan. Um, so it would show you what they would develop if it wasn't a PUD. Um, so it would show you if they didn't have the density bonuses, if they didn't have whatever modifications they're asking for and so forth. Um, and the benefit to that is you can, um, it kind of helps you with making a determination on the necessity of the PUD. Is it more efficient? You know, um, it, it gives a, a sense of that. So, we were wondering if that's something you would like to see in this process.
So, at the top of page six where it says a sketch plan, you're essentially, would be saying two sketch plans?
Yeah, I think probably at the con, the concept would be the appropriate time to do that.
I, you'd, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding the alternative. So obviously, one of the sketches is like, this is our dream. And then the other is, this is if you say no to everything in our dream?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, if you think of it, this is, if, if you think of like, um, uh, you know, cluster subdivision, it's pretty standard in a cluster subdivision because usually what's happening is, let's say, you know, it's 10 acres and they can have 20 lots typically, but they have to be, you know, 20,000, um, square foot parcels or whatever. Um, you are showing, if we cluster them all together, here's what the open space, here's the smaller road, so it'd be less impervious, blah, blah, here's how we would lay out our lots. And then you would show the traditional. So the board can kind of see the comparison. In this case, it, it provides, I think, a similar comparison, although it's not apples to apples to what I just described. Um, but it-
I love having two and I love having a comparison, I'm struggling with your other apple. So, well, cuz it's, cuz it's either, show me the least viable version, right? Because A, none of it's traditional, so we can't just say like what traditional looks like cuz it'd be like, it's a blank spot and it's currently that, and maybe that's what you're looking for. But what I think I heard you say, in which I feel like would be useful for us as we hear it, is, this is your ideal. And if you don't get all of that density bonus and all of that height bonus, this is what it looks like. And so that's the least viable version that they're willing to do.
Hmm.
Right? Which is different than what is allowed by code if you're not using a PUD, in which case, it's a bit ashore, it's a little agriculture and there's a single-family home. And that didn't help us make it. Yes, the PUD seems better and that's not really useful for our decision-making process. And I don't think it's getting out of them, which I hear you asking for, which is, if you don't get everything that you've asked for in this, what is the least viable development that you would be able to propose? And maybe that's the comparison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like the intention in other communities is like, um, you know, uh, if you don't grant us the PUD at all, you know, th, this is what we'll have to do. And I think that, uh, for some of our criteria, for some of our guiding principles, like, that's more of a motivating factor to approve the PUD than like, you know, something that actually helps us decide how we're gonna approve the PUD, to what level. And it's, so it, it sort of seems like things are kind of hitting two different spots here, um.
I just, I mean, a cluster I get, but a PUD is like-
But-
None of this I could do without the PUD, for many PUD, not all, but-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and I think maybe the, the helpfulness there, if it is a public comment session is like, you know, th, this farmland will become a little bit of housing plus all this open space if we do the PUD or if it was traditional subdivision, it would be that. Or if it's, it's industrial, this farmland will become, you know, this little cluster of industrial buildings plus all this open space. Or if we did a traditional industrial subdivision, it would look like that. That's what it sounds like these other communities are using these plans for. Is that sort of the general idea, Shelley?
Um, we could try to look into this a little bit more. Because I guess I'm not prepared to speak on like the, the rationale behind it or what it looks like in process.
All three hold value, right? Like, I, I think that that's, I, and I'm not trying to be cumbersome for the applicant, but I can see the value of if we didn't concede, cuz one is the highest and best use as currently allowed by code. And that is the apples-to-apples version, right? That's what you would look at in the cluster. And then there is, here's, we're going for the stars, but if we don't get everything on our list, we need at least this to make this project viable and that's what we're proposing. So there's the viable project, there's the highest and best use by current, and then there's their proposed. And I see them as three separate things, I'm naming them as three separate things, don't want it to be onerous. Can see the value of all three of those. I had Penwheat and then you, if that's all right.
Yeah.
I, I just wondered if there would be any issues identified in the pre-application conference that might help them look at the different versions that would be presented? And if we might have some expectations of ourselves to help them think through-
Yeah.
Where the challenging parts could be.
I think that's right. Mark?
I don't see any usefulness in seeing a traditional sketch plan. There's no usefulness to that, that just adds extra cost to them. If they're gonna do a PUD, they do a PUD.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they'll come to us with a traditional development.
Yeah.
Why give them extra cost? That's what, that's what I say.
That's my gut too. That is my gut on the usefulness of that one. Because it's like, I think it's the viable, viability.
That's fine. I, I, I don't see, I, I can see the usefulness in that. I wouldn't, I don't see the necess, the necessity of having them put in that extra cost for that either, but-
Yeah.
I can see the usefulness of it.
I think about the folks who came in front of us and said, we want this much of a glazing waiver, but I can tell you, if you don't give us at least this much, we literally can't get the material cost to work. Right? Like, that was their version of that, we had that conversation with them. I don't even remember if we just flat approved or met in the middle. Because, and I'd like, likewise, to your point, Penthia, that was the meeting in which we said, well, what could you do? It was a workshop, so pre-conference. And then when they actually came back, they had proposed something that I think was somewhere in between, right?
Yeah.
So I think maybe it's solved by process.
Yeah, and so it sounds like, um, you know, it's like, the planning board may require, right? So it gives you the flexibility to determine at that pre-application meeting, when you come back, we wanna see this viability plan based on what they're, or you may be looking at and saying, yeah, we don't need that. So it just gives you the option of asking for that if you think that it's helpful.
But that language would then be in the pre-application. But that language would then be in the pre-application.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, and it, so I don't know that, I think the pre-application requires some basic things, and then this doesn't, I don't think in the documentation anywhere it needs to stay what we might require, because we get to do that at the meeting and then have either required it or not definitively before the concept review. So does the document, either we're saying we do wanna see at the pre-application justification of X, Y, Z, hours of operation, or we're not, and if we don't and we might require it, we would require it in discussion at the pre-application for the concept review.
Yeah, although if the ordinance doesn't give you the authority to ask for something, then you can't really ask for it.
Yeah.
So that's the problem.
Well, so, but, thank you, it is the problem, can we try to solve that problem then? Like, could the language say, at the pre-application meeting, the board will then determine what they may require for the concept review, and you don't need to put a bullet list with it, we don't need to be prescriptive. Um, and that's where we're given permission and it's tailored, and, and not terrifying of the list we might require later when reality, we're never gonna be able to require all the things and list them. And seeing all of them listed is probably like, are they gonna ask me for all those things? Well, no, not you, right? Is what I'm hearing your response be, so like, yes, give us the authority, don't give us the authority for what may we require, we may require additional information.
Okay. No, that makes sense, and then we'll have sort of the minimum requirements, uh, for the concept approval that obviously you might have added to during the pre-app.
Yeah, we also might require higher shrubs, and we've done that before, but it's not written anywhere and it never stopped us, right? Yeah, I think it's that. So that gets us to plan unit review criteria. And your earlier request was that as we go through this, you think about what we might need to be able to assess this criteria.
Yeah, and I think everything we've been talking about lately is exactly what we wanted, was to understand, run through the process a little bit more, does this process feel right, does this, um, you know, what's missing in it? So same thing here as we look at, um, the review criteria, and then there's a section on development review as well.
So you'll find a consistent word throughout that replaces theme and you'll replace it here?
Yes.
Other thoughts on the criteria? All feels fairly pretty familiar. Whatever you decide on the sketch plan, you'll reiterate here?
Yeah.
Zoe?
And the same thing about, um, like more positive language rather than the will not have an adverse impact. Like, anywhere where we changed that in the beginning, the similar language could apply.
Hmm. I don't know how, okay, we'll work on that, like, I'm not sure how you would. I mean, the point is that you don't wanna have an adverse impact, I'm not sure how you would have a positive impact on the abutting properties.
Well, no, you, you either have no impact, nu- neutral or positive is the other way of looking at it.
Well, okay, but that's a higher standard than, I guess that is a question.
I mean, neutral is not a higher standard.
Is it the criteria or the standard that you're putting here? And is there a different place for the standards? Because the, the standard might be, will limit or ensure only neutral or positive. That's like a positive version of saying not negative, right? Um, but I don't, if the criteria we're reviewing is the impact on abutting properties, we're gonna review that. We're reviewing it to the standard that it is neutral or positive, but the criteria is impact on abutting properties. The standard that we're gonna use to review that is, and so maybe you're trying to do both in this section, I don't know.
It's tricky having only a neutral or positive impact. Most development has a little bit of a negative impact on the neighbor. So you're holding things to a higher standard than we typically do in development review or in the subdivision law.
The use will not have an adverse impact feels like a pretty high standard, that doesn't leave flexibility either. Cause that's still a, a little bit of negative is adverse, right?
Yeah, and I, that is language we've used before, but yeah, we can, we can come up with different language for sure. Is the intent that it won't have, or, or we've also had undue negative impact, so we could say something like that. But that's still negative, it's not positive.
Yeah.
I'm fine with undue adverse impact, not having an undue adverse impact.
I don't mind it, I'm just advocating for consistency in the language.
Even just limit, mitigate, will limit, will mitigate instead of will not, I think gets to some of a happy compromise there. And I think recognizes that like, I remember, does anyone remember the pickleball courts? A room full of people so excited for the pickleball, and this one person stands up and is like, have you ever heard that ball? Whack, 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 that's what we're gonna have to hear. And like, that was a very, really like, they're all room, it's the most people I've ever seen at a planning board, and they were wearing t-shirts, and they were pumped, and there was like two people who lived together and had control of that property and were concerned about that. And so, like, I think not having an adverse is not the standard. And I think the way that you can get it, like both positive language and the reality of what we have to decide up here on what different people perceive as negative impact.
Yeah.
Is like, will limit, reduce it, address it, and that's how you can get will instead of will not, language in there.
But don't we have, don't we have those standards already? I mean, don't we have, you can't have an undue adverse impact on the abutting properties right now? And I can't shine lights on my neighbors, right?
Right, so lighting and stuff like that happens during development review with this, it's more about the, um, any modifications they've asked for. So any, you know, bonuses you've given, um, any uses that may have been allowed that wouldn't typically be allowed.
So I mean, but I mean.
Or, or the layout, you know, if there's something unusual about how things are laid out, so.
We have that standard though, right? Of, we have some sort of standard of what is an adverse impact on abutting properties, right? Right?
Yeah.
I mean, we do, right? I mean, we know that, right? That's why we have such things as, okay, well, you have to have some sort of.
Berm, I love berms.
Berm, and you, you can't, you know, I mean, we, we know that.
We have buffering standards, we have light, lighting standards, um, hours of operation, that sort of thing.
So I don't see how, this is crazy, right? This isn't crazy, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Did you hear us saying it was crazy?
Yeah, I heard you guys saying it was crazy, like it was impossible to meet an adverse impact. Like, you can't not, you, you won't be able to meet, not have an adverse impact, everything's gonna have an adverse impact, and that's impossible. It's not, that's what I heard.
And we were calling it crazy, wild.
No, I was calling it crazy.
Yes, okay. I just, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be hyperbolic, I just love it to be clear, that's all. I think it's about what is the standard and how are you naming, what's the criteria versus the standard we're assessing with that criteria, and that's where it feels like two pieces are coming together. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the structure of this.
Cause the points that you're making, I think it is not, no, you can't have lights, and no, we won't approve it because that's an adverse effect. It's how do you mitigate the adverse effect and how much adverse? Yeah, so I think it's the will not have an adverse. It's, yeah, it's the, how, how can it be a limited adverse? How can we take into account and address adverse and not the standard is, there will be no adverse effects?
That's what, that's why.
That does part, you know what, that feels crazy.
An undue adverse impact makes sense, will not have an undue adverse impact.
Yeah. I mean, it's do if we approve it, and was undue if we don't, right? Even that's tricky. Okay, so we're good with criteria? Are, are we good with criteria, did you guys get through all that? We're flipping the page, page seven, development review.
I think we've covered everything up in that point.
Yeah, I mean, this seems like it's just sort of referencing back to the previous points in the document.
Yeah.
It's, it's essentially a checklist of additional things they need to submit for development review than if it wasn't a PUD.
And so I think this'll probably change a little bit if we change the main body structure, so I would propose we just skip through it.
Yep. Phase, plan, process? Did you have any questions?
Uh, no, I have some questions unrelated, like questions to ask at the end, not questions specific to K or the prior.
Guys, good with that phase section? Ask your question, Shelley?
Okay. I'm curious how you propose that we handle changes to the concept review. So someone comes in, they get their concept review approval, and then after it's been approved, they, um, wanna change their modification requests, or their approved organizing principles are gonna change, or they're making significant changes to the sketch plan, the open space was over here, now it's down there, and the entry road changed from here to here, like, it's all different. Kind of what's the threshold by which staff says, oh yeah, that's minor, it's fine, go to development review, versus staff says, yeah, you gotta go back for concept plan approval? So I don't need you to answer that question tonight, but that is something that we will wanna address, is like, how, how does an amendment happen, so.
Don't, don't we already do that for, for some approvals? Like, I, you know, stuff comes back for de minimis change, like, I, I guess what I'm asking is, is there already a tool that we can sort of use to, to rubric this one or not really?
The tool is staff, like, okay, so the tool is if it was staff review, then the director of the department determines if it needs to go to the back to the staff review committee or not. If it was a subdivision, then basically your planning board chair decides if it's coming back to you or not, or if it's de minimis. Like, staff makes a determination, we think this could be de minimis, we check with Shanna, she says, yeah, I agree, this is de minimis, and then she signs it. So at this point, it's, it's really, it's a, it's a decision that's not a board decision. And we have a feel for what we think is minor, but this is brand new, so it's a little different. So if somebody says, well, my organizing principle used to be A, B, and C, but now it's B and D, I feel like that's probably significant enough, cause they will have gotten some bonuses or something based on it. But when it's a little more minor than that, you know, so I guess I'm just looking for you guys to think through kind of that, and like I said, it maybe isn't a decision for tonight, but it's a, it's a question to pose for you to think about, and, and maybe the next time we bring this up, we'll all have a better answer.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I think something in the realm of anything related to a swap in the organizing principle or the bonuses that they're building in, so any of the variances that we might have said, well, if you do that, then we're happy to reduce the road frontage or increase the density bonus. I think if it's gonna fundamentally change what's achievable.
Yeah.
That really feels important. I could, I could care a little less that the industrial ended up in the bottom right instead of the top, right?
Yeah.
But if all of a sudden there's industrial and you're not actually trying to build housing, then we should probably see you again for your new concepts or.
Yeah, yeah. Or if the market rates to affordable, um, ratio shifts and that affects some bonuses or anything that you gave, like clearly that's, okay. All right, that's helpful, thank you. Uh, one other question, which doesn't sound related, but it is. We currently have an element of the ordinance that doesn't allow multiple principal buildings on one lot by right. There are a few exceptions, notably LD 2003 required us to make a few exceptions for, you know, two units, three units, but. The, I'm curious if the board is interested in eliminating that. That would be one of the reasons a PUD would be attractive, but it's also something that we could potentially fix in that part of the ordinance or say in that part of the ordinance unless you're using a PUD, right? And then that kind of grants the authority to the PUD ordinance to allow that. So I just wanna get people's feel, whether you're generally positive to that, whether we should make that more of a broader global change that isn't PUD-specific, or could we propose that to you? Just get a temperature on that.
Alex?
So I, we did talk about this a little while back, I remember this, and I was surprised that we actually had this ordinance on the books a little bit. And from what I remember, the concern with staff is around, like, let's say there's two buildings and they share a driveway, and you don't wanna have it so that one building can be sold to one party, and one building can be sold to the other party, and how is the driveway managed?
Yep.
And I think there's ways to, like, you can put it in the deed, you can have it as an easement, you can have the driveway owned as a separate third property that you have a condo association for.
Yeah.
I think it would make sense to just nuke it entirely across the board, that's my take. Just because like, other, I've seen this done countless other places, and it was sort of surprising that we can't do it. So like, I, that, that's my take. Other people have figured this one out, I think we could just copy it, move on, I don't think we need to do a carve-out for PUDs. I mean, yes, it removes one incentive for doing this structure, but like, overall, it makes things just easier for everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think you hit on the concern staff had, and it's almost larger concern for me is, and it's, and it's not a concern, it's only a concern for the person trying to sell it in 15 or 20 years. That they would like to break it up into pieces, it's more saleable, whatever, or I wanna keep this part, but I wanna sell that building. And that's always a challenge, we have plenty of, you know, three unit, four units in the city with a single-family house on the same lot, and there is no good way to split it up as far as being possible to meet, you know, lot size requirements, frontage, like anything like that. And the people, it has to stay as one property, and people aren't happy about that, but it is the reality, that's how it was developed, and it has to stay that way. And that's how, you know, somebody who develops this and wants to, you know, they own it for 20 years or whatever, but then, you know, there's heirs or somebody and they wanna do something different, or a new buyer wants to do something different. So that's the challenge, is that it limits the flexibility later on, but, um, it allows something to get built today, and people have to accept the fact that that's what the design was. So that's the only trick is, you know, it, it require, it ends up being a conversation later usually, but that's not a reason necessarily to not allow it.
Yeah. One is the, the potential negative impact that's gonna be felt by the future buyer and seller at that point, which might be the person who developed it right now and today.
Yeah.
About how they wanna approach it or how they can make that sellable. That's a them problem, they either bought it and knew this might be a potential issue, or they created the applicant and developed it knowing this might be a potential issue. Carry it.
Yeah.
Get creative.
I.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I don't.
I literally have neighbors who have this problem, two houses built, that, they were definitely on the same lot, and they got split up, and now one guy's driveway, his second driveway runs through this other person's backyard, and they hated each other all over it, and I think now they're getting along, they've figured it out, so.
So you like, you.
It works out.
Buyer develop with your eyes wide open.
Yeah.
You're gonna pay for it when you sell.
Okay, so I guess I'm hearing generally, cause I'm not seeing dissent, that you guys are generally supportive of that direction. Okay, all right, that was all I had for questions.
Anything else on PUDs before we get feedback from the housing committee? And some more information from you on compliance at our next round, whenever that might be? Great. Uh, then I'm gonna move us to reading in the minutes, and look for a motion to adopt the August 11th, 2025 draft minutes as presented.
So moved?
Thank you.
Motion to adopt the meeting minutes?
Thank you, I was like, you guys gotta get in on the one vote today, I was hoping people could take it. Thanks, that was first and second, any discussion on the minutes or amendments, great, all in favor? Uh, we're gonna not call the roll by hand, that's unanimous.
Okay, and we had Alex as the first, who's second? Penthea, thank you.
Great, was there any other business? Then we're going to.
Michael Markoff has some business.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, what is the status of, uh, the Charles and Farrowell Street project?
Um, I believe we issued a foundation permit for the first couple of buildings on Thursday last week, and they are in the process of building roads and infrastructure.
Is that happening right now?
Is what happening right now.
Construction's happening right now?
Yes.
They got the foundations in.
Cause I just heard today from a coworker, uh, wondering why nothing's happening back there.
Cause a lot of people can't see what's happening under the ground level when they're driving by.
There's definitely a road on Charles, entrance from Charles Street and entrance from Farrowell has been built.
Wasn't there a news story that something had halted there?
I haven't heard that.
Couple months back?
I don't know what was in the newspaper, I'm sorry.
And using that as a segue. So when are we going to see our next development review? It's been a while.
We do have something on the agenda for the 22nd, but staff doesn't have control over when people submit applications, so.
Possibly the 22nd.
I'd say it's been summer and that's when nobody meets with their architect, with their financer, with their... I feel like a couple have been pushed out, but it's not surprising that's-
They'll go down the floor. How about Martel School? What's going on with that?
Um, so they received phase one and phase two approval from you. They have two years to start construction. And, um, I think they came in for a minor amendment to phase one that the planning board chair signed a few months back. And, uh, you know, I'm not familiar with exactly what's going on behind the scenes for their financing and so forth, but-
If we're going to keep doing this, you want to tell me what's going on with the lumberyard on the waterfront?
Well, I did want to know about the Continental Mill.